Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward divides by the Nebraska Gobbling Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Gobbling Means Act is displayed on the fourth wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure and meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. The participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back here. Camper, Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Here.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of February 21st, 2017.
Move.
Sitting. We have a motion and a second is during discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Hans, motion carried.
The next item is the consent agenda.
Move.
The motion is second, is during discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
John, was that you? I'll reject the motion, John. Okay, Camper. Putting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Hans, motion carried.
The next item is a public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM. This is consideration of a catering class CK liquor license. Uh, this is for the Red Path Gallery and Tasting Room. Is zoomed here for this?
Yes, please.
Oh, there we are. Right there. Um, does the council have any questions? We'll have a resolution on this with a recommendation of the now or approval next, but just wanted to give opportunity, get any comments or questions first. Did you want to say anything?
I would just invite, do you want me to go?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Say your name and address, please.
I'm Jeannie Weimer, 529 Graham Park Drive. I'm representing Hingweimer LLC, doing business at Red Path Gallery. We have had more opportunities to go out into the community to do wine tastings and different things with the libations, and we'd like to apply for the K license so that we could do more of those events. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We jokingly say that K stands for catering.
I know.
That's how I remember that. Are there any questions? Otherwise, I would ask if someone would like... Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. It's a public hearing, so we do have a public comment portion for this public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And now, if someone would like to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce it.
Alright, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as Resolution Number 2017-04. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move.
Seven.
You have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Hans, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, number six. Consideration of an ordinance on second reading vacating alley between Lincoln Street and Cedar Street and between Fourth and Fifth Streets. So this is a second reading. The ordinance providing for the closing and vacating of the remaining portion of the north-south alleyway located between Fourth Street and Fifth Street and Lincoln Street, beginning at the southwest property line of Lot 9, Kroger's replat of Wood subdivision, and the southeast property line of tax lot 165, continuing north approximately 510 feet to the northwest property line of Lot 3 of Kroger's replat of Wood subdivision, and the northeast property line of tax lot 272, the same being a partially established and platted alley within the city to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. As I stated, this is the second reading, and we will do the third reading next time unless someone would like to make a motion to dispense with a statutory rule. Such to the council.
I am not willing to dispense with the statutory rules.
Alright. This is ordinance number... 2017-02, and again, this title is hereby approved. So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say, good.
You have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Yes?
Just a question, Mayor. If I remember right, Larry appeared before us last time, right? Talked about this. Somebody, somebody from the electric department, the street department...
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
John and Larry both talked about this.
Yeah, yeah, and if I recall correctly, you were not in favor of this, correct?
That would be true.
Okay.
I believe the planning commission voted unanimously not to, right?
Not to.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to remember.
That would be it. And then I don't believe we had any motion on the floor to either accept or deny, so...
Any other questions or comments or discussion?
No.
Yes, Dean?
John, what is your reason for not closing it?
For not vacating it? Larry's got an electric rebuild that's going to be going down that stretch within the next year, and his concern was, and we walked the distances of the rebuild, and they're really, with exception of coming in off of Lincoln Street with this pole mover, there's no way to get materials down there. And as it is, we're probably going to have to remove a couple fences and sort of go through some gardens and whatever.
So what, if we do vacate it, is he still going to be able to do that without it?
Well, if we vacate it, we'll vacate it and use the alleys in the east. So they still won't be able to build structures there because I feel it's necessary for us to be able to maintain those lines. But if they want to put up fences, they can put up fences as long as there's removable panels, or if we have to go in there, we don't, we're not responsible for it, please.
You were at the planning commission hearing, weren't you?
Yes, I was.
Was there, were there neighbors that also commented, what was their thought? Do you call them?
Their thoughts were that they didn't want to see the alley vacated either.
Okay.
That was the general consensus.
But I...
You're good, John?
But you know, now, question though, if, even if we vacate it, there still would be an easement right because of the poles, correct?
Well, we do have an easement because of the telephone poles. What I would do is I would institute an easement if we vacated. As part of the vacaning of the alley, it would go back in and constitute a valid easement.
And then my second question is, didn't we buy an expensive track tool that we can minimal...
That's what I was talking to when I was talking, we'd see what we could... I mean, it's a little deal, it'll go through pains and whatever. There's just no room between those houses to get them there.
So even with the tracks, it wouldn't have enough room? Okay.
Any other discussion? So we do have a motion and a second, to remind you, this is just to dispense with the statutory rule. Seeing no other discussion? Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Miller, Singleton, Hans, opposed, Camper, Fritz.
So it fails, so we'll do the third reading the next time. Alright. Thank you, John.
I will try to have Mr. Roth, I spoke to Mr. Roth about the situation, and he said, "I don't want to put Richard and Scott when he isn't here right now," but at that time last week, he really wasn't interested in vacating the alley anyway. So I had to make sure he either comes here or truly identifies with me his intentions.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, John. So that was item number six. Item number seven, this is a council member request, this is consideration of letter of intent to support the Seward County Wellness Center. Dean, did you want to say anything to start this one?
I've just, I've been talking to Shane Bach, and I, I see the need for this. I think the big thing is for the city sense of this. So I, I think we need to have Shane explain how this would work. So that's, that's my thought.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Shane, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Shane Bach, 134 Maple Street, Seward, Nebraska. Got a few materials for you I'd like to hand out before I get started, just to show you a little bit of the progress of what we've been working on, give you some materials, as well as a sample letter. Guess I could have had one of my colleagues in the audience pass it out. So I, did everybody get a copy of the letter that I sent to bond? Okay, so I'll pass that out. We also have just a sample of the letter, of what the letter of intent would read. And I was also asked by a few members of the communities to list some pros and cons. Now, having brought these to your attention, it's skewed a little bit because obviously I'm in favor of the project, so the pros to me outweigh the cons by dramatic, by a dramatic number. But the focus of my conversation tonight, I'd like to talk about the, the letter that we sent because we don't want this to be a thumbs up or thumbs down negotiation. Obviously, we have an opportunity to redevelop a large part of our community right in the heart of our downtown, and so we want to, you know, find out where the city's at and what they're willing to do and what they're not willing to do because anything is helpful. So that's really the crux of our conversation tonight, is, is to find out where the city is and is this something that we could work together on? Or is it something that you would rather we didn't work together on? We've seen this work in other communities. The most recent one I've worked with is Shatteren. I know Hickman did one recently, I talked to Kelly about that one, and I think he was involved in that matter as well. And, you know, in most cases, they're going out and bonding these projects, or they're, you know, somebody's taking the responsibility. I know in Hickman, it was a public-private partnership where a foundation came in and purchased the property, and they built the property, and then the municipality came back in to lease it from them. And we're kind of asking to do that in reverse. We've got a really strong group of people working together as a nonprofit today, and we feel that's the right direction for the community because we don't want to saddle the city or the, any municipality with more burden of financial responsibility. We don't want you to have to raise taxes. We don't want you to have to bond the project, you know, that you're responsible for. And so, these are just a couple of items. I think we've got six items here that we would have you consider. The first one is, consider working with, you know, creating the task force that we could work with over the next 45 days to apply for a grant through the Civic and Community Centers Financing Fund through the State Department of Economic Development. The purpose of this task force would be to work through some of the items that we see where there's, there's room for collaboration or where we think we could collaborate this project. And again, I, I guess what I didn't want to do is just bring you options tonight, and you said, "Yeah, we like this, no, we don't like this." I don't know if a city council meeting is the right place to negotiate that type of stuff, but we'd like to put together some recommendations that we could bring back to the full council to review and, you know, have it massaged a little bit instead of just bringing it every time. So our first ask would be, would the city be willing to form a committee or a task force to work with our organization to see how we might be able to collaborate? The second one is, would the city be willing, and this is one that we really need to take action on. By April 1st, we have to submit a letter of intent, or the city has to submit a letter of intent, which we've given you a sample letter tonight to, to take a look at. And that letter of intent doesn't mean we have to apply for the grant. It just notifies the state that we intend to apply for the grant because they kind of want to know who's going to apply and who's not going to apply. So it would be very helpful if we could take action on that tonight. If we can't, you know, I guess we'd like to be on the agenda for the next meeting as well to discuss that issue because we're limited on time to at least put our letter of intent in on that grant. The intent behind the grant is that we would give a building to the city. The city would be given a building, and then our committee would go out and raise the additional dollars needed because it's a matching grant. So if you're awarded the 375, you would have to come, or you know, the city has to come up with 375,000. Our committee is, is determined that we're going to be the ones that provide that dollars. The city's not going to have to come up with those dollars themselves. So that's, that's one thing that we're working on there. That, full application for that grant is due June 1st. So when I said we need to work over the next 45 days, we would like to have that to the council by the first part of May so that you can review it and make sure that's the direction that we can go together to apply for this grant. Okay? Item number two is, would the city be willing to accept... Excuse me, item number three is, would the city be willing to accept the building, which is currently what was named Mike's Market Building? That's where we look to house the swimming pool area. There'll be some locker room space in there, but that's, that, if you look at the parcels there, that building itself is a separate parcel from all the rest of the property. And so it's an easy one to carve out. So the city would technically own that building. And then our ask, you know, would be, could we find a way to lease that back to the entire project? And that's what we want to talk about with the task force. Item number four leads me into the lease. We would create a triple net lease agreement with the city where we would lease that facility back, the 10,000 square foot facility, and we'd have to create some sort of agreement where all that property would be hooked together. And so that, again, is an area where we'd have to talk about and find out. I would also, number five, like to see if the city would be willing to look at Nebraska statute, Chapter 13, 1101 through 1110. And that statute allows the city to do some, do some bonding, but that bonding is not held against their current bonding rating. It doesn't count against their credit rating, and it also doesn't count against their limits. And so, I know, I mean, it's, it's a lengthy document here, but that's something we would like to work with the task force on as well to see. The reason this is an attractive piece is because this helps move the project along faster. It allows the city to get involved without having any risk. And so that's what item number five is. Item number six is, we have some challenge grant opportunities out there. You know, the Peter Keywit Foundation, we've applied for a grant through them. There's also a Robert P. Dorby Foundation out of Omaha that we're applying for, and we're looking for challenge grants. We have a great committee of people that were, that are working with us. We already have 40 people that have come to our meetings in one way, shape, or form that are interested in creating our forces and going out and raising these dollars, but they like to be incentivized. And so, is there an opportunity where we could work with the LB840? And I, I don't want to, I don't want to go after a loan for a large amount in one full swoop. I'd rather do it over time. And so just want to talk through that, and I know the council kind of, they get that at the end after the recommendation has been made by the LB840 committee, and I understand that. But that, that's an area where we have tax dollars coming in for economic development, and those dollars, you know, could they go to a project like this? Do you see that being a fit for a project like this in our downtown business district? So those are just six items that we would love to discuss more with, with members of the city to find out where they, you know, where you stand as a group, and find out is, is there an opportunity for us to collaborate together? The one action item I would ask for tonight is, is if we could, you know, look at that letter of intent, would the city be willing to allow us or work with us to send that letter of intent in? And, and again, we don't have to apply for the grant at the end of the day, but we do need to have our letter of intent in to stay on track. It buys us about 60 days, about 60 days to get our formal proposal together. We also have hired a grant writer, I forgot to mention that. We already have a grant writer that we've hired that is willing to put the grant application together, so it's not like the city would have to put this grant together. We'll do it for you, we'll bring it to you, you can critique it, pull, put in what you don't want, you know, what you want or what you don't like, we can pull out as well. So I guess I'd be open to answering any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Sid?
Josh, either for you or Kelly, regarding the actual agenda item. The agenda item is consideration of a letter of intent to support the Wellness Center, which is very broad. But what I hear Shane asking for is more specifically that item two, which is submitting a letter of intent to economic development for the CCCFF grant. So...
And if you want to do both, that'd be wonderful.
Well, I guess, no, but that's why I'm involving Kelly, is from an agenda standpoint, do we really just need to stick to what it says? I mean, can we modify, how far can we go with this? Because I see one item on number seven turning into six items. Specifically number, you know, two.
What we did was, we just took the request as was drafted and put it in the agenda. We didn't, I don't think we got this until yesterday. So we weren't aware of this, of this list, and so that's why the agenda was drafted the way it is. I would defer to Kelly on whether there's a concern that this is not, was, was not properly provided notice for.
Well, we are talking about, I think, two different letters of intent. The agenda item says the letter of intent is to support the Wellness Center. You know, that's probably, if you want us to take action tonight on the letter to be submitted to the Department of Economic Development.
Isn't that a letter of support?
I mean, I think that would fall under the parameters of showing support for the project by submitting this letter of intent. So I think you could take action on sending this letter of intent to DED tonight. I think that would fall under the purview of that agenda.
And additionally, I don't think it's binding on, on, the letter itself isn't binding on...
But, but any other sort of letter of, we don't really have anything else for consideration tonight. So I'd only would want you to take action on approving, sending this to DED.
Is it, once again, does that answer your question?
What's that?
Yeah, I said, does that answer your question?
What, last thing you said, Kelly, is you...
We don't have in front of us a general, we don't have anything else in front of us other than this letter that's going to go to DED.
Okay, and, and I guess where I was coming from is, the, the agenda item I see is very general. But what you're saying is, we can actually get very specific and modify seven to not just be a general, okay, yeah, we like it, it's a great idea. To specifically be this DED letter? And I'm not a lawyer. It just seemed like that's kind of a modification of the agenda item, a bit, bit of a stretch. That's, that's why I'm asking you. And honestly, as a council member, I mean, I'm, I'm more comfortable with a more very specific letter of intent to like, for the CCCFF deal than the broad paintbrush of, yeah, we just support this thing in all of its form and fashion.
But I mean, the agenda goes back to whether or not there was, you know, sufficient notice to the public about the particular agenda item. And if you don't think that there was, you know, sufficient notice to put the public, you know, unnoticed, if it was going to be considered, you know, you could always vote on this at the next meeting. It sounds like we have an April 1 deadline.
Well, yeah, and I just, I mean, like I say, like, like you, I just got your letter, Shane, you know, today, actually.
Right, so I, you know, initially, this document was like four pages long, and I was spelling out every term of everything that we wanted to talk about. I just didn't think this was the right forum of a place to talk about all these items. I think it needs to be broken, I mean, just personally, I think it needs to be into a smaller group. And if the city, you know, doesn't support this, or they're not behind it, that, that's okay. We just need to know. And, and that's, you know, when I was talking to Dean, I didn't know how to word it the best way. I wanted to know where the city stands on the item.
Right, and, yeah, and I understand that. My, I guess just, and honestly, like I say, my, my main concern is with the original agenda item. I wouldn't want the council, well, me personally, I wouldn't want to commit the city or the council to like, just a general, oh, we love this idea, we're in favor of it because...
There's a lot of things you might not be in favor of.
Well, there, and there's a potential of our blessing, so to speak, to be used in political ways, in ways that could leverage donations, you know? And I just, we've done this in the past, and it hasn't worked out well. And so, as far as just number seven, as it, as it is written, I have more concern with, I guess I would prefer to see it, if it was an agenda item, be, be actually very much more specific as what number two is actually spelled out to be, which is the, the, a letter of intent to the Economic Development Department specifically for this. I'm just, I'm a little nervous because of past situations like this where the city has been asked to just kind of give their approval on something, and then that is kind of used as political ammunition for other things, and I'm not comfortable with that.
I agree with you.
So, that's my questions and concerns.
So I guess at this point, if there's a question of whether this should be on the agenda before he discusses further, I would ask, be looking for a motion to table that item until the next meeting, and it can be on the agenda as a more specific item?
I would prefer that.
Otherwise, I don't want to go too far down the path of discussing what we, you don't feel comfortable discussing.
Yes, I would, I would make that motion to table it until we can get more, a more specific motion on the table.
Okay, so you're, so you're talking specifically about item one. I think we could still talk generally about the item itself.
Oh, yeah.
But for specifically looking for this, as a price of this letter of intent to apply for a grant, we have a motion to table this item until next meeting.
Well, not the grant. I'm, I want to table number seven, which is a very broad, just a generic letter of support.
Yeah, he's moving to table a general item, number seven.
Yeah, table, table seven, and then come back with number two from his letter.
Right, okay. But so then, so by tabling this, are we done talking about this entire topic? That's what I would say. Or are we going to talk about, because this item here says specifically that you're looking for a letter of general, a letter of intent to support the Seward County Wellness Center. We can still have a discussion on whether to support this without taking any action. But so specifically, you're not tabling item seven, you just want to table the specific issue of this letter? Right? Is that not right?
Well, you guys are wanting to, because all I need is what's on the agenda.
I'm asking, right?
You're fine.
You're saying the same thing.
You guys can still have discussion about this item tonight if you want. But you can table any, any voting on this. Nothing to stop you from discussing that agenda item. You can still have discussion tonight.
Okay, is that what you want to do?
Sid, am I understanding you correctly, that you want to table the fact that you don't want a generic letter from the city saying that we support this thing? You would rather it be a specific letter that says, "We are willing to work with you to submit a grant, or a letter of intent to the grant." Is that, would that be...
For the CCCFF, okay. That's where I'm...
And we would be very okay with that, if...
So we don't really need a motion just to tabling it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was my confusion, I assumed we would need to do that. But, uh, I'm sorry, are you done?
No, that's why I'm here.
Alan, did you want to ask something?
Yeah, um, where are we then, on his first request would be to form a committee or a task force? Where does that come in? Tonight, or not tonight, or?
I would defer again to Kelly.
I mean, that's, you could discuss that tonight, but that's not on the agenda.
And you're still within your timeframe, we put this up one more?
So, so we've got like 45 days. We've got 45 days to... We've got forty-five days to kind of figure out, is this what the city's wanting to do or not wanting to do? Cause if, if we miss the deadline, it, it really doesn't make sense to, I mean, unless the city has another idea of how we can collaborate together, this to me is an easy one, that's not gonna cost the city any money.
Just since we're still discussing.
And to clarify, are you gonna withdraw this motion to table, is that fine?
Is that what I should do?
That's fine.
I'll withdraw the motion to table.
It cleans up our record.
Okay, that, that's fine. Since we're still discussing, on number three, Shane?
Yes.
Um, and I don't understand, I mean, I've been on a board of a five oh one C whatever before. Uh, but what is the benefit to your foundation, which is?
You have to own the property in which we're applying for the grant in number two. According to, according to the gal we talked to at DED, the city has to own the property in which we apply for the grant.
And so the only way that you can apply for it is if we own it, is by you giving it to us?
That's right.
Okay.
Unless you wanna buy it, and I don't think you do.
No.
And I don't want you to either.
So, okay, that answers that, and that's kind of what I thought, I just wanted some clarification. And then, um, on number five?
Yes.
The whole bonding thing, I did actually, I printed out that, that whole thing. And of course, I couldn't understand most of it, but.
That's why Kelly's here.
Yeah. Oh, so, and Kelly, you may know more about this than me, on thirteen dash eleven oh one to thirteen dash eleven ten, but, so it's a blighted situation and an, and a nonprofit, when there's gonna be improvements, can basically use the city and its collateral.
Not collateral.
Okay, clarify.
Okay, so my understanding of the law is this, the city can, if they have not used ten million dollars worth of bonding authority in one calendar year, they can use anything under that for bonding purposes. So let's say you have a road project, it's four million dollars, that means you have six million dollars left, okay? The six million dollar bond would be let out to either the public or to a private entity. Once those bonds are released, and on the bonds, you have to say that you're not liable for the bonds if this bond fails. The city has zero liability. So what you do is you take that bond and you transfer the bond to the nonprofit. The, the nonprofit is then responsible for paying the principal and interest on the bond. If the bond were to fail, this, it does not go against the city's credit rating or their lending limits as far as their bonding goes.
But, but then if it does fail, who's, who's left holding the, the bag?
We are and the investors are.
And, and I've, I've confirmed that much with our, with our bond counsel, Gilmore Bell, but, um, I don't know the specifics and ins and outs of the entire verbiage of that act that he's talking about, but I have confirmed that with my managers.
Yeah, we said investors, this is a nonprofit entity.
People who buy the bonds.
Okay.
Yeah, investors is in the bond.
Okay. Dean, did you have a question?
Yeah, so how exactly does that work if, if you donate the building to City of Seward?
Yep, so you, you're, you're at risk, the building that we gave you.
So.
It fails and we have to foreclose on the property, you're gonna lose the building we gave you.
So if it blows up or shanks in the ground, it's.
Yep.
It isn't hanging on us.
It's not on you.
Sid?
So, how much, um, I know the, the total dollar amount looked like around four million dollars, what?
Four and a half.
Four and a half? I don't know, how, how much were you anticipating would need to be used through this bond?
Well, that would depend on, our goal as a committee is to raise two and a half million.
So two million?
So about two million dollars.
So then, Kelly, I, like I said, I, I tried reading through it, um, so the, the, the city's bonding ability is used to get this two million dollars. The two million dollars then is given to the nonprofit to buy and make improvements and build things, right? Then how does that money, who pays, who pays that money back? Cause typically bonds, the, the, the depth of bonds is shouldered by the taxpayers, right?
You're paying them back for taxes. So if somebody buys a bond from the city on a road project, you're paying it back with tax dollars.
So.
So we are the ones that pay that bond back, just as we would pay a note back to a bank.
Well, but, but you and me, right?
No, because my organization is responsible for it. It's not on the taxpayers to pay the bond.
Oh, so you're, you're, you're investors specifically, not the taxpayers?
Our.
Are the ones that are.
The money from our operations would be responsible to pay back the bond.
We're transferring, we would be transferring that to this organization's entity, so they would make the bond payments. The word investor is a little bit confusing. The investors, I think you're referring to, were the people who buy the bonds.
Correct.
Would, would be, I don't know that they see themselves as investors for the traditional sense, but, I mean, they're investing, I guess, in, in that. But the risk is on them.
So the risk is on them, and then, say, God forbid, the project falls flat on its face and, you know, everything goes south. Then, since the city was involved in that bond originally, what liability would we still have, any?
Zero.
I think there's zero, and, but don't hold me to that, let's get, get, get a letter from Mike Rogers or Bond Counsel.
So, so statute.
Be consistent with my discussion, sorry, John.
Yeah, John is.
So then, to Sid's point, as long as the city don't sign any binding contracts on that bond, it'd be the official that, or the business, whoever signs that bond is gonna be the one responsible. So as long as the city don't have to sign anything an intent with that bond, right? So you guys are gonna be the ones signing that bond?
No, we're issuing the bond.
You're issuing the bond, we're transferring it over.
So then it's still gonna come back on the city?
No, cause the way, the way the statute is drafted by transferring it to this entity, then they will be responsible for the bond payments.
So there'll be a legal contract that Kelly will make up, holding them accountable?
Our, our Bond Counsel will.
Yes.
Okay.
It's gonna be an issue as of the bonds.
So, last line of statute eleven oh four says, no breach of any such agreement shall impose any pecuniary liability upon the municipality or county or any charge upon their general credit or against their taxing powers. And that's stated three times in the language of this document. Um, Tim Mall has been, he was actually the one that recommended this to us to, to at least explore as an option. Again, this helps the project move along faster. Our goal as our committee is to continue to raise the money. Because just like the library, the library was, the dollars were raised by private individuals, or a, a lot of it was raised. Then what happened, if I'm understanding correctly, the city took over the operations of that facility after it was up. We want, we want to maintain that as a nonprofit, just as you would see a YMCA or anything else like that. And they would be, we would be responsible for continuing to raise dollars, to pay back the notes and work through those details.
You're not, you're not asking the city to take over the operations?
No.
That would, that would run foul of the, the, uh, the bonding law.
Yeah, cause that's what the question I was gonna bring up, cause we have another facility that started out as a nonprofit and can hardly keep its doors open now, a brand new building, well, pretty new, youth center. I'm, I'm just bringing it as an example. You know, I don't want that, you know, for our taxpayers to have that light, you know, or come back at the council, you know? You know, I don't want us to have to go back and, you know, and go after money after our taxpayers.
Totally understand.
That's the big key, right?
Yep, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, I'm a taxpayer. I don't wanna pay any more property taxes or any more.
You know, youth center was going gung ho for, you know, for years, and then, you know, then everything moved north, you know, and that put a hurt on that.
Yeah. And we've actually asked them to come in with us into this project. They haven't confirmed that they will, but we, we think there's some room for consolidation there.
Yes, Alan?
Number six, can you go into a little more detail, um, the, um, connection with the LBA four, you have a challenge grant?
So, like I said before, we've applied for some challenge grants through like, um, the Peter Keywood Foundation, the Robert E. Doherty Foundation. And I kinda got this idea from, um, from Shatter, that's what they did. And, um, the intent would be not to, um, you know, come with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ask to get this thing off the ground. What, what I see might work well is maybe we ask for like twenty-five thousand a year for the next ten years or five years. I think we'd probably start at ten and let the committee tell us, no, that's not gonna work. But the intent would be, you know, the, the, and, and I think one of the, um, people that spoke last time made a good point. The pool is really the costly piece. And it's very hard for a private entity to operate a pool, and you, you guys know that from the city's pool standpoint. Our, our ask would be, you know, we set up a two hundred and fifty low interest loan to start. And, um, maybe we do it twenty-five thousand a year for the next ten years. But if we're able to hit our goal, and, and maybe that, we put that number at two million, would, would LBA forty consider turning it into a grant instead of a low interest loan? I don't know if that's possible, but again, that's why we don't wanna negotiate that at the council meeting. We'd rather have that negotiation, you know? The committee might just say flat out, no, we don't wanna do that, and that's, that's okay. But if we could, if we could come up with some alternative terms that makes sense for both sides, everything helps.
Okay, I, yeah, um, I don't know how LBA forty would work.
Well, you could do either grants or loans.
I, I know that, but the, the whole challenge thing.
Well, I mean, typically what happens, you'd have an application seeking a, a, a loan and/or a grant. Um, and my guess is you would probably either, are you, are you looking to match one or two particular grants that are out there, or are you looking at a number of different grants?
We're, we're looking at a number of different grants. You know, I just looked at, I, we've used LBA forty in the past and it's a great resource to help kind of get the project over the, over the line. But by doing a, a challenge grant, their monies are, your monies as the LBA forty are the last dollars in. So we've gotta raise a whole bunch of money to get us over the edge.
Depending on, depending on how the timing of all of these, like when they would find out on, on these applications, my guess is we would probably bundle them into one or two meetings, assuming the timing works on when you have to have the match by. And then you would just have a meeting where you would look at here are two or three or five different matching grants that you'd have to come up with, and you would decide at that point. But you're talking about loans or are you talking about grants?
Um, I, my, my proposal would be that we come in asking for a loan. If we hit, and I've seen this done in other communities, that's why I bring it to the council. I know Wayne's done this a number of times. If they're able to hit certain numbers or get certain things done, they turn it into a grant instead of a loan. It just makes a pro, it puts a project on better footing if it becomes a grant, so we don't have to worry about the repayment of that. But I'm also sensitive to the fact of, we wanna make sure that, that pot of money continues to recycle, because the more it recycles, the more economic activity is in our community. So I, I'm sensitive to that, and again, if it needs to be a loan, it makes sense for us. If it has to be a grant, it makes sense for us.
So you think you can use a loan as a match to a grant?
No, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking for is terms to put it together, initially as a loan. If we hit a certain number, if we raise two million dollars, that loan becomes a grant. So instead of paying that loan back, it's granted to us instead of paying it back. So it's not two ask, it's one ask with two terms.
All right.
Sid, your question? I got two questions. So, first related to this, so I'm, I'm not on the LBA forty, um, board or committee or whatever, but, so you would be coming to the LBA forty local committee asking, let's just say for two hundred thousand dollars? Loan?
Yep.
And, and I don't know, Kelly, if LBA forty allows you to do this, to change the terms of a loan into a grant?
I don't.
In midstream? Because that's what I hear you saying, is you wanna come and say, oh, it's gonna be a loan, but then, if we raise two hundred thousand dollars separately, then we want that turned into a grant, which all of a sudden then it's not a loan anymore.
I mean, that would be up for consideration for the LBA forty committee, and if, that would have to be built into the loan agreement.
Well, you basically, you're asking them to just forgive the loan.
Right.
And I assume they can have terms to do that, but again, we need to have other lawyers look at that before we say yes.
Yeah, I agree, we're not taking action on that.
Right, so then my, my other question was, I noticed you have a different logo?
Yes.
Since the first time, which as an artist, I like this one better, by the way.
Oh, well, everybody hated it.
Oh, I think it's way more modern and this one looks, anyway.
See, I thought the same thing, Sid, but everybody hated it and they told me it looked terrible, so you had to go out and hire a graphic designer.
I was actually really impressed with the first one, and the second one, it's like, would you get this off Google? Anyway.
Actually, it was designed by a local, uh, graphic designer.
I'm sure it was.
Uh, Kaylee Mueller is the gal from here in town.
I know Kaylee.
Yeah.
Um, so in the logo, and it's, I think in the first one, yeah, the word county is in there. What participation or?
Our membership.
Commitment are you asking for from the county as far as dollars?
That's a great point. Uh, our reason for using county is because we want to attract membership throughout the county. We do feel it's a City of Seward, a project. We do feel it is a City of Seward project. We have a tremendous opportunity to redevelop three quarters of a block right in the heart of our town. And, and I have thought about this for almost two years now. What are we going to turn that into if this isn't it? Okay? Who is it going to impact the most? It's going to impact the City of Seward the most. Our city sales tax dollars will go up because of additional traffic to this community. We think the county attraction is very, very important. We're going for donors throughout the county. We have, out of the top thirty donors that we have on our list, we've got four from Milford, we've got four from Utica, we've got four from outside of Seward to the north, so half of our donors are outside of the City of Seward. We're attracting to the larger base. We know there's eighteen thousand people in our county, and our attraction is to the county. Even though it's in city proper, and that's why we're here talking to the city proper, not the county, I also know the county just built a jail, and I have a hard time believing that they're gonna wanna do another big project like this.
That answered my question. And then the other last question I had, Josh for you and Kelly, just so I understand, if we take action on number seven tonight, are we amending this action to not just be a broad-based letter of intent, but specifically to address number two?
That's a question, Trey. I don't know that you felt comfortable taking action at this point, did you?
Right, I'm most comfortable with you tabling this item until the next meeting, so we know specifically. So we have a specific agenda item that says consideration of letter of intent to submit to the DED.
But you had asked me to withdraw my table, right?
I have a question on that, Bill. If you look at the request form that's filled out, there's a field called action requested on that, if you look in the packet, that has provide support for a proposed Seward County Wellness Center and allow for the city and SEWC to submit a letter of intent to the CCCFF.
But it wasn't put on the agenda.
Oh, so.
But it's attached to the agenda.
No, that's not the agenda though. I'm more concerned about the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, just cause the way it's been published. Right. You know, um, yeah, I'd, I'd still be in favor of tabling it for what Kelly said. I think that'd be the cleanest way to go.
Do you wanna restate that then?
Yeah, I would make that motion to table.
Okay.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, we would motion on the second as a ring for a discussion.
So if they vote this down?
Well, then about the table.
If, if they voted it down, what would happen?
When they voted down?
If they voted the table down, what would, what would we say tonight as far as the action that we could take tonight?
Well, I still don't think, according, I mean, Kelly, I don't think you feel comfortable with taking any action.
Right.
So this is just a formal, this is just a formal motion by the council to say we're gonna take this up at the next meeting. So this is just a formal, this is just a formal motion by the council to say, we're gonna take this up at the next meeting.
So I, how, how do we know where you stand?
Well, they're making a motion tonight, let's, let's hear the, you know, the vote on the motion, if they're gonna move in second and take a vote, then it's gonna be tabling until the next meeting, your motion's gonna be a motion to table this item to the next meeting, and at that next meeting, we can, we can have more detail, more detail in the language of the items, we can take a vote at that time.
Right. Yeah, the, the agenda item would have to be re, reworded more to comply with item number two.
And, and I totally understand. So I was here thirty days ago, and we talked about forming a meeting and negotiating with the city, and the importance of that. We're now under a forty-five day time crunch that was a lot longer than that thirty days ago. So, I, and I agree with you, I mean, we gotta do what we gotta do to get this through, but we've got to move forward if we're going to put this on a June one deadline. Because we have a lot of things that we have to bring to the council that has to get approved before June one for this grant to go through. And tonight, we don't know even where you stand, if this is something we're prepared with.
From the city's standpoint, we have to do things clean upfront on our end. And when our council tells us to do it this way, that's, that's what we should do. So, it's just, it's not that we're thumbs up, thumbs down tonight, it's just that it needs to be cleaner on the front end for the cities, from the city's standpoint. Simple as that.
Yeah, Alan?
Kelly, we could, uh, go ahead and, and set up, agree to a task force or a committee member or something to at least work with him and discuss, I don't know.
I mean, there's, that detail should probably be on the agenda as well. I would add, I would propose that you put all the detail that you want in the next agenda for the next meeting.
Each action item should probably be listed in each agenda, so the, so the public has notice on those items.
So, we couldn't just make the motion to specifically give them okay to, to, uh, pursue this to get it started, we can't, we can't honestly do that without getting into a binding situation.
We're not holding them back from doing anything.
Well.
The only, the only thing that, well, no, but, but we've got plenty of time, A. The, the deadlines are, are out there, and all we would be doing at the next meeting is just saying that we're gonna, we would submit a letter of intent. It's not even agreeing to it, it's just saying a letter of intent. And so, two weeks isn't gonna cause any trouble in that regard.
So, I mean, and in the meantime, there's nothing stopping, you know, the mayor or you as individual council members from meeting with Shane's crew to learn more about the project and, and become better informed. There's nothing stopping that at all. And that collaboration can go on right now if you want to.
So in lieu of forming a committee or a task force, we could just informally?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, what, what has to be avoided to, to, um, avoid open meetings violations?
We can talk about that after council, okay, just have sufficient detail in the agenda.
I think to your question, if you just can't have more than a quorum, can't have a quorum at your group.
So that's four?
Be five. So we had a motion and a sec, a motion and a second, drink for the discussion. This is table the item till next week, sorry, next meeting. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz Miller, St. Louis, Kansas, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Shane. Next item is the city administration report, Bonnie?
Um, nothing special in there, um.
Any questions, I guess, from the council? Or comments? If none, then we probably would make a motion to accept.
I will.
So.
Your motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz Miller, St. Louis, Kansas, motion carried.
Do we have any future requests from the council? Seems none. I don't have any upcoming events unless anyone else has something to mention, as you're about to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display your votes.